Called to order the Ashland Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, June 9, 2022. We'll start with an invocation by Commissioner Gutten, pledge allegiance by Commissioner Spriggs.
Blessed be. Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity we have today to make good decisions for the betterment of our city. We once again ask for your divine guidance through your spirit as we strive to do this. Blessed is Board of Mayor Commissioners, our city manager, our staff and employees, and those that attend us today, either in person or in our viewing audience. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to receive and file the minutes for the regular meeting held on May 20, or excuse me, May 12, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings and reports, Commissioners, if you will allow me to start today. First off, I want to extend my sincerest condolences to family of Travis Umberger, a classmate of mine. Commissioner Gutten and I were just at the visitation, and it was a reminder to me of how precious life is. And it's really, really a tough day for me and so many others that were friends of Travis. He leaves a beautiful family, wife and child behind. But it's a reminder to me to continue to live life to the fullest and be good to each other as much as we can because life is so very precious. In that vein, too, I'd like to issue a proclamation. We did this last year for the first time, and I'm honored with my commission to do it again. Whereas the City of Ashland is a city that welcomes and celebrates people of all races, ethnicities, religions, genders, sexual orientations, physical and mental circumstances, and economic status. The City of Ashland strives to cultivate our diversity and believe it enhances the quality of life in our community. And whereas the City of Ashland formed the Human Rights Commission, a group of diverse individuals from across the city, serving as a voice for citizens to advocate for an inclusive and equitable environment where every citizen feels valued and safe. And whereas the Human Rights Commission works in concert with the city to ensure all citizens' rights are upheld. And whereas the City of Ashland aspires to be an organization where employees and citizens use their unique experiences and backgrounds, where ideas are heard, and where we advance a culture of inclusion daily to meet the needs of our employees and community. Our vision is for individuals to feel a deep sense of belonging, purpose, and value. And whereas the residents of Ashland are urged to expand community outreach, engagement, and authentic collaboration that will empower each citizen with the ability and desire to help create a society that condemns racism, misogyny, intolerance, discrimination, or oppression towards any person. Now therefore, I declare this month of June, Celebrate Diversity Month in the City of Ashland. We all commit to support, participate, and help expand inclusive conversations in support of a community that is free of oppression, persecution, and hate. Commissioners?
Okay, I'll start. Last week was D-Day on June 6, and I hope that, I would encourage everybody to remember those, not only on D-Day, but our veterans who fought for all the freedoms and liberties that we enjoy in our lives here in the United States. Also, Flag Day is June 14. Please remember to fly your flag and remember those who fought for that flag as well. Also, I have to say, I had a shock this morning. I stopped to get gas. Paid $105 and change to fill up 20 gallons of gas in my vehicle. This is unprecedented. I have never seen this before. So it made me think about we're getting ready to work on budget. I'm not the only one paying these extremely high prices for gasoline. So, you know, we work as a team up here when we look at these things, and we always keep in mind our taxpayers when we're working on our budget and keep in mind that they are also having these expenses, as is our staff and our citizens. So, and I believe that's all I have.
I just want to welcome everybody. Just to, I just want to say, I was, First Friday was a huge success. Probably one of the greatest crowds that we've ever had. My fellow Commissioners were in attendance. And we had the 50th anniversary of the Senior Center and the unveiling of the mural on the side of the building, which I thought was very impressive by Elias Reynolds. And so that was a good time. Also, the second Friday, is that correct, Broadway nights coming up this Friday? And we have a lot of things planned. I want to say I had a picnic at one of the new shelter houses.
Oh.
And my class of 73 at Blazer. And the first part of the day with the fire department was in my shelter house. And then I had the last part. It was, it's a great thing. I really appreciate the Parks Department and our decision to do these. And, you know, a brand-new shelter house, and it was very impressive. On a more serious note, I'd like to reiterate what the mayor said. I just came from the funeral home, and I had Travis Umberger as a sixth-grade basketball player at Oakview Elementary. And he graduated with Matt, and my Matt that lives in Lexington came in for the visitation. And so our hearts go out to Jerry and Beth and Kyle and their family, and just 45 years old. And, you know, you're going to get my brief Sunday School lesson right now. The Bible says that we don't know what a day is going to bring forth. Our life's like a vapor. It appears for a little time and then vanishes away. And that's why we're encouraged to love the Lord with all our heart, soul, mind, and strength, and love our neighbor as ourself, and to make the most of every opportunity. As I stood there today, I thought about that. And then I thought about the proclamation that I'm going to give on Saturday to a woman named Beth Robinett that just turned 100. So the thing that's certain about life is, it's uncertain. And that's why we live by faith. And so I just wanted to share that today.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. One, I'm going to talk a little bit about First Friday because it was great. And thank Ashland in Motion and all of the volunteers that make that happen. We had no less than a dozen Ashland in Motion volunteers on the ground on Friday to help with that event. And of course, Visit Ashland helps us significantly with that event as well. Randy and Courtney are-
They equaled 20 people.
Forty-five people between the two of them. They're awesome. And we appreciate you more than we can put into words. In that same vein, next Saturday, Saturday, June 18, is the Seventh Annual Ashland in Motion Furkin Fest. Tickets are on sale at ashlandinmotion.com. It's sure to be a fun day with lots of your closest friends in downtown Ashland. Later that evening is a show, Zach Bryan on the Riverfront that the Paramount Arts Center is putting on. And they anticipate selling out that show today at 10,000 tickets. So just be prepared for what's going to happen in downtown Ashland on June the 18. It's going to be something to behold and makes my heart smile because I think it's exactly what we've been working for for the last decade. And I appreciate the city, the commission, and everyone who's supported these endeavors to get us to this place. And I believe this is one of many of these kinds of events to come. So, thank you all.
And make sure you bring your driver's license because I'm checking.
All righty. Well, seems like every time I come downtown, there's less and less of the Ashland Oil Building, which is great to see. It's stepped down every single day, it seems like. So, thank you all. Thank you to engineering and city manager and all of our staff that are continuing to watch that project as that comes down and we get ready for our conference center. To piggyback on what Commissioner Clark said a little bit. So we met with our Destination Ashland team for a checkup meeting, which, to, you know, a lot of our delight, a lot of the things that were left on that list for us to go through, we've accomplished. So, and I think citizens are seeing that as well. The intent of that group, that plan, is to transition then to our permanent nonprofits to carry that on. But what we noticed and what some of the folks from Ashland in Motion noticed with First Friday is it's not so much a small group of people having to do everything now. We've got citizens who are doing these events, right? Citizens are making things happen because they have wonderful facilities now to make their events happen. And that, you know, that's, citizen creators are what we're seeing, and that's happening more and more. You know, I define myself, you know, I was inspired to do this job. A big part of that was Commissioner Clark. And it, to me, what we leave behind isn't necessarily what we accomplish, but what, who we inspire to carry this on. And so that's a, it's been great to see citizens stepping up and making things happen in all kinds of different groups and organizations. Juneteenth is coming up on June 19, and the event in the park. And that's another citizen-led group. Most of the group had never been involved in having any event before. And yesterday, they actually closed sponsorships because they had brought in so much money for the event. So it's a second year for that event. But that's just one example. There's many other examples of citizen creators who are organizing events and making things happen. And that goes to my point that I really kind of developed, you know, this year, is our role as a city is to provide these facilities and these places for our citizens to express themselves. And that's what we're doing. So, thank you to the citizens and thank you to all of our staff that have made that happen.
Commissioner Blank, could you give the time on Juneteenth festivities?
Where does it start? See, it starts at 1, I think?
1 to 5, is it, or?
I'm going to get yelled at for putting her on the spot.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All righty. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I need to start off an apology. I promised you guys we'd have event calendars at the meetings, and I've dropped the ball on that. So I'll have that at the next meeting for events in the city and specifically in the park. I want to pass on an attaboy or congratulations to utilities, engineering, and everybody else who's involved. This week, we had what we think was a final review of the punch list for all things SCADA, the water treatment plant. And to the best of our knowledge at this point, we are, thank you, we are very close. We're actually at the end of the trail with the SCADA. After some administrative things, we'll start the 60-day performance period. And if that goes well, then the system will be ours and it'll be under warranty. But there's been a lot of things that people have just not seen that's going on with this. So representative in this room, Mr. Cole, Mr. Hall, just fantastic work. And it really propels us to a different level. I think the mayor and commissioners also know that we had talked about, and I talked to Tim Gibbs briefly about doing a business after hours there as a kickoff event. So again, as this gets finalized, we'll put that on the calendar. On a smaller level, I want to, congratulations to HR. Had representative out at the job fair at the mall yesterday, was able to talk to about 50 people. So continuing to keep the city on the radar for potential job opportunity in this market is a challenge. So great job to HR and Samantha for taking care of that. And then the last thing, we're continuing to work diligently. We've got a lot to get ready for the parking garage, and the staff is working very hard on that. And we'll have a firm timeline and some recommendations very soon. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Now we go into public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Presentations are limited to five minutes, and no action will be taken at this meeting on any issue. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry complaint form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. Would anybody like to come forward?
Hello. Lynn Childers, I'm the executive director at CARES, and I'm actually here to speak a little bit on that. This is my first time at speaking.
Well, welcome.
I don't really like public speaking, so.
We don't either.
We're a recipient of some CDBG money, and I wanted to kind of come here and kind of give everybody just a little glance of what we've done with the funding that was received by the city. Now that funding is used to pay salaries for our case managers. But this is just some of the work. I was going to get the hours. Hey, how many hours has our caseworkers done with their clients? But three caseworkers, 40 hours a week, pretty much they're all, it's all case-related. So if you want to do the math, you can. But I wanted to see what we were, show you what we were doing with the citizens. So since the beginning of this year, so January 1st, we have paid rental deposits for 17 families. So we've basically helped assisted in housing 17 families in permanent housing. Along with that was utility deposits as well. Seven of those families received utility deposits. And I know that's kind of like, well, okay, some of them went into housing that utilities were included, whereas some of them didn't, so it's the difference. As for like rental arreages, we did, we assisted 21 families who were behind in rent so that they would not lose their housing. And I don't know if you all are aware, but the City of Ashland has a couple of ordinances that sit that say that if your utilities, such as your electric and your water, are shut off for a certain length of time, they can condemn your home. So with that, we actually assisted 67 families with utility arreages. So again, they weren't, you didn't have to come in and condemn their houses, and they were able to stay in the homes that they were, that they were already in. So, pretty much, that's what I wanted to say. If anyone has any questions or such.
We appreciate what you're doing at CARES. We know as a government, it's hard to do what we do as it is. So there's a lot of things that we can't handle, and we rely heavily on you all in partnership to make sure our citizens' needs are met. And we can't be more proud of the work you're doing. And we really, most importantly, appreciate the update on how this money is being spent and who it's being spent for and what it's being spent on. You know, our, we have to mind our money.
Yes.
And a lot of times, we know in our hearts that what we're doing is right by giving you all support. But hearing that you've helped people from being homeless, you've kept them housed during a horrible time in our history with the pandemic is really heartening, and we really appreciate the hard work you and your staff do and continue to do on behalf of those in need.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to old business.
Old business, item A. Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a short-form agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and HGR Engineering, Inc. for professional engineering services in the amount of $207,384 for design and agency approvals of the Dawes Street Rehabilitation Project for the Department of Engineering."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the May 2022 Transit Asset Management Plan for the City of Ashland Bus System."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky approving a renewal with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance Company for the administrative fees to administer the city's health insurance coverage, vision insurance, Delta Dental, Kentucky Insurance, and stop-loss coverage for Plan Year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023."
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky approving the renewal for life and AD&amp;D insurance through Standard Insurance Company for city employees effective July 1, 2022, and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute documents relating to said insurance."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending ordinance number 55, series of 2009, previously amended by ordinance number 45, series of 2010, ordinance number 77, series of 2014, ordinance number 81, series of 2018, ordinance number 10, series of 2020, ordinance number 125, series of 2020, and ordinance number 7, series of 2021, commonly known and referred to as the loading zone ordinance, removing the loading zone in the 300 block of 17th Street and specifically repealing ordinance number 66, series of 1978, ordinance number 79, series of 1978, and ordinance number 9, series of 1979."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item F, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Meschon, the sub-recipient of $15,000 from the 2021 program year community development block grant."
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and Mountain Comprehensive Care Center, Inc. regarding encroachment for a freestanding sign at 2022 Winchester Avenue on the city's right-of-way."
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and First Christian Church regarding encroachment for a freestanding sign at 1930 Winchester Avenue on the city's right-of-way."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky designating a handicapped parking space on the east side of 17th Street in the 300 block at the intersection of Winchester Avenue and 17th Street, and providing a penalty for the violation of the ordinance."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending ordinance number 22A, series of 1989, as amended by ordinance number 128, series of 1989, and ordinance number 154, series of 2020, which established parking schedules and provided a penalty for the violation of establishing no parking areas in the 300 block of 17th Street."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All this for establishing one parking place, right?
Exactly.
All right.
Two spots.
Two, two, okay.
Item K, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending ordinance number 8, series of 2021, commonly known and referred to as the alcoholic beverage control ordinance."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and improving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of June 9, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to make a comment. Item 1 on the consent agenda is approving a bid to install a camera security system for our park system. I can't, if approved, I can't thank you all enough. This is critical to stop some of the nonsense that we have seen already. Our brand-new playground equipment has been vandalized. And it's really frustrating to us, knowing we put serious dollars into our parks to improve them, to see them destroyed by people that don't care so much, so. that don't care so much, so.
What was the cost of the damage, city manager? Do you remember?
I don't have a cost on that yet. I think we're still getting an estimate. Sean, or Mr. Murray, do you have that yet?
But what, we, we may not catch them in the act, but this, this camera system will give us the tools we need to possibly be able to go after some people. We, we've worked too hard on our park system to see it destroyed by people that don't have good intentions. So on that note, I'm, I'm glad to see this on this agenda. Any other comments?
Yeah, whoever did that should be ashamed, actually.
It is, it is worth noting, I mean, I, I think we all agree with what the mayor just said. That, that dollar number does take you back a little bit, but I, I did a little bit of research this past, this past week into some other communities, and it's in, very much in line with what other communities our size actually have done as well.
For the camera system?
Yeah.
All right.
Also, I want to say I found out where Automobile Alley is. Any of?
We're making strides on every street.
Mayor, one, one other comment on the camera system, just engineering parks, HR, everybody else who's involved in walking that. There's numerous iterations on that. We walked through the park and made sure that the angles, again, we think it's the best solution at this point. We'll find out, but a lot of, a lot of staff work that went into that. Proud of the staff for everything they did.
Then most importantly, I guess I should ask Chief Kelly, will this help you? That's what we, that's what we hope for. All right.
And this is, this is part, this is city-wide. This is also AK.
This is multiple parks.
Multiple parks.
That's what I saw in here, Central Park, AK, yeah.
And so would there be a fine attached? What, what would be the consequences?
There's already vandalism ordinances.
Vandalism ordinances, okay.
You need the evidence.
And, and it's, did it have teeth in it? I mean, it's pretty good, right?
Well, it's about, it's about supporting prosecution, right?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business, item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the standard operating procedures of the Ashland Fire Department and repealing ordinance number 51, series of 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Commonwealth Kentucky Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management, for reimbursement of expenses from the winter storm February 8, 2021 through February 19, 2021, through the FEMA DR 4592 Public Assistance Grant, and any all documents associated with the grant.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting regulations concerning mobile food vendors.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hallelujah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Article 20 of the agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Ashland City Police Members for Total Order of Police Ashland Lodge Number 3, as adopted by ordinance number 193, series of 2021.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and New Tech Systems, Inc., for furnishing all labor, equipment, software, and materials as required to install a camera security system for Central Park, AK Steel's Sports Park, and Olivario Park in the city of Ashland in the amount of $147,540 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Sections 2 and 4 of ordinance number 108, series of 2008, to bait unreasonable necessary noise within the city of Ashland, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Can we just elaborate a little bit as to what this does specifically?
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm going to parlay over to Jim because he did the, the lion's share of the work, but very simplistically, it lines up our noise ordinance with our special events as a result of experiences that we've had over the, the last year to try to best control those environments. What else would you add, Jim?
Yeah, basically, your, your existing noise ordinance has a general provision that says it's unlawful for any person to make a continuing unreasonably loud, harsh, excessive, or unnecessary noise which annoys, disturbs, injures, or dangers, so on, so on. Then it has a provision that says the following specific things are, are specifically held to be violations. And what we've done is add two specific things that would be violations, and one is operating sound amplification device or musical instrument between 10 o'clock at night and 7 o'clock in the morning in such a way that adjoining residents could hear it with all their doors and all their windows closed. That sort of makes it a lot easier to enforce than the unreasonable, annoying thing because you can objectively see if that's been, happening or not. The second one was with respect to the use of mechanical loudspeaker or bullhorn amplification device for the purpose of amplifying the human voice. That creates any noise that's louder than the normal conversation level at a distance of 50 feet or more would be a violation and, without a special events permit. And the, the purpose there, I guess, is we've had some First Amendment events where the, without trying to restrict anybody's right to express their views, they're so loud they can be heard eight and 10 and 12 blocks away and basically drown out everything else. So as it exists now, our parks ordinance says if you're using an amplification device, you have to get a special event permit. This says that if, if it's louder than what you could hear 50 feet away, that you would not be able to do that without a special events permit. And further in the ordinance where it, it says exceptions to the noise is, is an exception is if you have a special event permit. Later on, on the, on the docket, we will have an amendment to the special event permit to put in some standards so it's not arbitrary on when you would issue on amplification devices. I know that's long-winded, but it's.
I appreciate it. It's important, and I think one of the things that we hear all the time from our citizens is sometimes their burden with sounds coming into their home from events, and, and it does end up disturbing the peace that you would reasonably expect them to have in their homes. So I appreciate the extra work on this.
I, I just want to say thank you, Jim, on, on this because this is one that has, it takes a lot of work. There's a lot of these issues that people don't see their work on, but you've done a great job with this.
It involves some First Amendment issues, and we're trying to, you know, respect everybody's First Amendment rights, but still protect the rights of citizens in terms of being disturbed and annoyed.
Now, I read the whole ordinance. There's a lot of other things in there that has to do with noise.
Yeah.
Do we get a lot of complaints about noise issues? Do we know?
I'll let Todd handle that one, but we do, yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Give somebody an opportunity to do the right thing. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have, I know I have received many calls about complaints on noises that I'm sure our commission has as well. It's something we, we've had to wrestle with here for quite a while, and I think this is a reasonable solution to help.
Well, and our standards are somewhat subjective, and that's, you can't help but be somewhat subjective in this.
Yeah.
We've tried to make it a little bit more objective to the extent that we can on a couple of these issues.
All right. Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G is an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Section 8 of ordinance number 157, series of 2020, regarding rules and regulations for special events and amplification devices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the job description for the position of Director of Public Services in the Department of Public Services and adopting the amended authorized positions list of the policies and procedures, compensation plan, and classification plan as adopted by ordinance number 30, or 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then item I, a reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, a municipal order of the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed of conveyance between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Sabra Back, Ann Foltz, Gerald Coons, Karen Coons, Charles P. Coons, Jennifer Coons, and Connie Lambert regarding the acceptance of the donation of real property at 3309 Newman Street.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Now, what is that? Is it a piece of property, or is it a house?
It's property across from the cemetery that had a, probably non-conforming property on there for a long time, and that person passed away, and the heirs have very kindly agreed to donate it to the city. So I think we've already removed the structure, but we'll actually own the property there, so I don't know what.
That's great. I was over there putting flags on veterans' gravestones for, for Memorial Day, and I saw that, and it was quite a nice word, red, sitting there. Yeah, so great.
Well, it's gone now, and then again, we, we thank the family for the donation of the property to us.
That's great.
All right. Any other discussion on the matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
For the record, for, to discuss individual personnel matters.
Very good. All right. Everybody okay with that? Okay, we'll go into. Okay, we'll go into.
We've returned at 1:16. No action was taken. Do I have a motion for recessing our meeting till 8:30 a.m. tomorrow?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned.